Here.
Here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hornhold, would you care to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. One nation under one law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very kindly. Okay. Approval of minutes.
Um, I request a motion to approve the the regular meeting minutes of July 12th. And all the special meeting minutes on July 10th, 12th, 19th, and 25th.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, uh, thank you. All right, uh, public presentations, uh, Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Nicholas Chiranzelli as a full-time firefighter EMT. At the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement. Pending successful completion of the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund physical. Obtaining his fires, Ohio Fire Safety Inspector or Hazard Recognition Officer certification within one year. And to serve a one-year probationary period noting that all associated expenses to be that of the township.
I'll make the motion.
Segue it. Okay. Uh, roll call.
Um, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Nicholas couldn't be here tonight. He's out of town. So I appreciate. Getting that out of the way. We'll try to get him here next month to to be sworn in and get pictures.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, thank you. You have one more?
On the next one, I'm actually going to turn this over to Assistant Chief Watkins since he spearheaded this project and. And worked with this wonderful organization. So Jim.
So, uh. Back in April, we were approached by Ms. Rita Frederick, who is here tonight from Marymount. Uh, she went with the American Legion's Ladies Auxiliary for Amelia. Uh, to Unit 773. Uh, and she approached me that said basically she was getting to the point where. That group needed to retire. And we had been the lucky benefactors of a generous gift from the ladies auxiliary unit. Um, to buy some much-needed rescue equipment, which is at the back of the room. We've gotten almost all of it in. Some of it's actually on vehicles already. So, but through the efforts of. Uh, ladies in the auxiliary unit for the past several years. They had money that they were going to close in their account. They decided to donate it to Pierce Township Fire Department. And, you know, for the use of the fire department and the community at large. So it was a very generous gift. It was $12,050. And we just wanted to say thank you very much. It's much appreciated. We can utilize. Hopefully, not too many times, but if it will happen, so.
Wow.
So.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because this is one of the final things of getting rid of all of their accounts. And stuff, can we get a picture at the back of the room? She wants it to document for all that and stuff.
Sure.
And I. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add bigger than just this donation. This is the same organization that donated substantial money to the police department last year. I know I was forgetting. And and I think even that gift has gone on a little bit further. The police department's added a few cruisers. So with the new life jackets we got for to replace some of our older ones that were still in okay shape. We've given some to the police department, so they have a few spares, and we're going to give some to the service department. Just since we are a river community with flooding, that way they'll have some too. So it just, the gift just continues to give, which is just fantastic.
Before you go for the ceremonial photograph, I I just want to say you're part of a. The 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 greatest generation, you know, what folks in your generation. Do and did, you know, really is an example to the younger women and men of today. And as as you all get a little bit older and retire and move on to different phases of your life. It's my hope that these younger folks learn from your examples because, you know, we don't see enough of that today, but you all did it selflessly. With complete heart and you were completely invested and you did it for all the right reasons, not for the recognition and. Uh, from speaking, I think for the entire board, you know, we want to thank your your gener- your entire generation for all you all have done and continue to do. We wish you the best of retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't really know how we can top that, but, um. Next will be, first of all, I guess anyone that's going to speak this evening. You know, hopefully, if you haven't signed in in the back, please do so. Um. And then when you do come up to speak, as a reminder, tell us your full name and where you. And your social, no, you don't tell your social. Just tell us your full name, where you live, and, um, that way that we can, um. Um, make the notes as accurate as possible. So, uh, is there anyone that would like to speak before the board today? Yes, sir. Come, come on up.
Social.
Dave, you forgot to tell us who you were and where you live.
David Bornhold, New Richmond, Ohio.
Thank you.
Hey, Eddie, is this, is this mic working?
Uh.
Just in case, I mean. Yeah, hundreds, if not thousands of people we have watching. I don't want them to.
Okay, how's that?
That is much.
Great. Okay.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Um, so Pierce Township has two and a half miles of riverfront. Uh, there was a power station there. And it's got some pretty nifty assets. Some mooring cells. There are leftover and also a bridge that, uh. Designed for high water to be able to get to that. Okay. But, uh, so this little handout is a lot of fun, uh, river facts. But if you, I want to tell you just a few minutes, uh, the story of the first steamboat that ever came down the river. Thank you. So in 1817. Uh, Robert Fulton started the steamboat from Manhattan up to Albany. It was a huge success. There had been steam engines for a hundred years to pump out the wells in Europe. But they were as big as houses and they consumed a lot of coal. So he made a smaller engine that made it work. He got some more investors. The Livingston, Livingston was a fellow who actually signed the. Uh, Louisiana Purchase for the United States. And also Roosevelt family of which grandson was later one of our presidents. And, um. So they got a lot of money together. They came to Pittsburgh in 1811. And in the meantime, they were getting monopolies in all of the states along the river. That they would have the full control financially of steamboating. So they built a boat in Pittsburgh, very similar to the Claremont in New York. And they started down the river and unfortunately. They got stuck on every sandbar that was in there. And when they got to the waterfalls in Louisville. They had to wait for some rain to get through. The steamboat never came back. And so there was a fellow in West Virginia, wasn't West Virginia yet, Shreve, that Shreveport, Louisiana was named after. And he did some things where he realized that the. All of the boat was going to have to be flat. To get over all the sandbars. So Livingston heard about this. He went to go see Shreve and says, young man, you've done a very nice job here. However, we're going to have to take you to court for our, uh, franchise that we have. So they took, uh, Shreve and Shreveport, Louisiana was named after him later. Uh, they took him to court in Louisville. It was a federal court. And the big money lost and Shreve won. They said that the purview of navigation on the rivers, uh, is federal and not state. But. So it took a number of years and a number of improvements, uh, to to be able to navigate. Safely over the sandbars and shallow, but by 1740. There were 700 steamboats operating around the river. The steamboat air lasted until the Civil War when the railroads came in. And they, um. Right away took all the small packages and they took the passengers away. Right away, took all the small packages and they took the passengers away from the steamboats. Um, and so right away, the steamboats tried to pull barges alongside. Them to make the money. They soon found out that it was much more efficient to put all the barges lined up. So even though they weren't towing anymore, they're still called tow boats. Okay, any questions on any of the facts on the? There?
Where are we at on the historical timeline of 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 the river in Ohio?
Well, okay, there's.
A short meaning of.
Oh, no, that's fine. Uh, the, um, we're pretty much into diesel tow boats now.
Okay.
Uh. If you see the last line on here. Uh, the Ohio River and its seven navigable tributaries. Uh, moved two hundred and seventy million tons of coal, aggregate chemicals, agriculture, industrial, and petroleum.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, every one of those petroleum barges that you see. Million gallons.
And thi- this is township business. I assume you're driving at a at a point.
Well, what I'm, what I. Like to impart is that you have a tremendous river asset. And if we, and there's a wonderful fellow in New Richmond, he's getting a little older, Bill Judd. But he's his whole life on commercial and. With those. Uh, mooring cells that you have there. Those are like a million dollars apiece. And they take care of all the up and down of the river. And they also protect you against all the drift. Wouldn't. Yeah, and so it's tremendous asset. Uh, the future is really strong. Um, if you move a ton mile on water, it costs you ninety-seven cents. If you move a ton a mile on a railroad, it's two dollars and fifty-three cents. If you're on the highway, a ton a mile costs five dollars and thirty-five cents. We have. Thirteen thousand miles. Of navigable water in the United States. That's a built-in infrastructure that gives us a tremendous advantage and economic advantage. So, um. The. River here constantly goes up and down. Because we're downstream of a big dam. They keep the upstream level. That, so every time it rains, we get a five-foot, ten-foot. Raise here, but with those mooring cells, it ceases to be a problem. So that was my, my real point is that it's such an asset there. And if the trustees are aware of it, maybe we could steer it. Um, the Waterways Journal is the big commercial publication. Be neat, uh, to get a year subscription to that. You can also advertise in it. Um, who actually owns those, uh? Mooring cells. I suppose might be up for discussion. Um, this is worth a minute. Kentucky became a state before Ohio did, so they took all of the river. So when they built the first set of dams in the nineteen twenties, it raised the whole river level. So Kentucky said, fine, we'll just move our state line. Went to the Supreme Court in nineteen thirty-five. The Supreme Court says, no, the Kentucky border is where the old river was. Who knows where that is? You should notice on the maps today, they keep getting closer and closer to Ohio. So just the tremendous economic advantage that Pierce Township has with that facility there. And I just wanted to. Do my best to kind of. Plant maybe some seeds and be looking at the future and could be a tremendous economic asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoops, um, we appreciate that you reminded us of that very important fact, and. We agree that we think we have a nice piece of property down there that could. You know, serve the township and the county well if developed properly, and we're working in that direction. With many partners, including the property ownership, the county, and others. So thank you for that, uh, very nice explanation and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to, uh, to speak? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and move ahead with departmental updates. Colonel Brochstrom.
So, uh, last Wednesday, we had our national night out. And, uh, prior to the event. Uh, there was much planning involved in it. We created a steering committee. Uh, that started meeting in February of this year. Um. The police department, the fire department, the service department, we're all involved, along with Mark Can. And Michelle Ballside, so we thank you, Michelle, for participating in the, uh, steering committee. Uh, but much preparation went into it. And, um, we had a. Obviously, we had great weather. Uh, but I think, um. We had the largest crowd, from what I'm told, uh, of any national night out in Pierce Township. Somewhere between seven hundred to nine hundred. People were estimating. And the, the, uh, the goal this year was to really gear it towards, uh, children and trying to create it. Create a carnival-type atmosphere. And I think we accomplished that. We got many donations. Um, and, um, it went off, uh. Pretty well. I meant there were very few hiccups. And like I said, I think the, um. Nice weather helped us in drawing people out to come to the event. But it was a collective effort, and, you know, this is a perfect example. Of the departments in Pier- Pierce Township all working together. To accomplish the goal of creating this large event, so. Uh, we look to have it even, uh, bigger and better next year. And we will begin in February of twenty-four.
It was a great time.
Thank you.
Yeah, you knocked that one out of the park.
You did.
You guys did a really good job. I've never seen it so well attended, and I just love the layout. And the band did a great job, and everything was really turned out nice. The weather was on your side, and we'll.
Right.
Say that, but you guys did a really good job.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Um, Chief, while while we've got you on the spot here, would you mind just giving us a quick, since it's coming up this Friday? Uh, just a quick two or three words about the ice cream social, uh, that's planned for Spencer Shank on Friday.
This event is, uh, this Friday at Spencer Shank Park. It's the second, uh, annual ice cream social. Um. Dr. Campbell is sponsoring the ice cream at the event. Uh, Grandma's Pizza is sponsoring pizza. And it's a way for us to help draw in. Uh, the Amelia side of our township. Uh, and it's right before the school year starts, so we're hoping to get a, uh, a lot of kids there and interact with the children. The SPCA will be there as well. Uh, so we look forward to a, a good attendance at, at this event.
That's great, Chief. Will we be offering those DNA kits as we did last year to families?
Um, I think I need to check to see if we still have a supply.
Okay.
If not, um. We will order them and have them for the next event.
Okay, and then this might be an opportunity. I guess this would fall the chief right, but since we're on the topic and I'll be brief. But this might be an opportunity too, as we get closer and closer to darker days. With the onset of fall and winter and the like, might this be an opportunity for us to emphasize the, uh, use of our reflective address signs? To the public, make that available readily to the public, whoever might want to attend and get information about that. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Colonel Brochstrom. And Chief Wright?
I just want to give you a brief update on the FEMA property buyout on Old Fifty-two. Um, I know it's. Seems like forever ago that we started talking about it. Um, the appraisal came back and was finally accepted by Ohio EMA. So the property owner had probably twenty days now, it was thirty days once it was was approved. To review the appraisal with the county. Um, and do a few things. He can accept the appraisal. And it will go before the commissioners to to finalize that agreement. The closing date will be set. If he doesn't agree with the appraisal that was done. Um, at his cost, he can hire his own appraiser to come in, um, and then there's a discrepancy, there'll have to be some negotiation. Or he has the right to to drop out of the program at any time. So I think it's moving forward. I think if he accepts. And they close, the timeline will get pretty, pretty short. As far as closing on the property and then the removal of the structure and the restoration of the site. Wanted to make you aware, we did receive twenty thousand dollars from a highway ambulance ground transportation grant from the state of Ohio. Um, for retention bonuses for our folks that worked during the pandemic. Um, we've been working with the fiscal office on a dispersal of that. We have received the funds. Um, so it will be a one-time payment to. Fire EMS personnel that worked. So we have another grant application still pending with the state, trying to get some additional dollars. Um. We're trying every, every we can to get every dollar we can. And the last piece is our, our full-time position. We've got a couple of full-time firefighter medic spots open. And one lieutenant, so the. Last month, we promoted a lieutenant. Um, we had two openings due to people leaving, um. Uh, nobody successfully completed our process. We have reposted that lieutenant's position, so we're currently in that process. Full-time process, um. We had five or six folks that were in that. Since we started the process, uh, one. We dropped from the process for not completing, um. Satisfactory completing all the components. Two other people that were in the process have resigned or have dropped out of the process after taking full-time jobs elsewhere, so. We're still trying to find people still working at it, but it's, it's difficult. So I think you'll notice our motions this, this month and the last couple of months, we've. I I know the board's had a desire to have all pre-employment items done before people have been brought before the board for, to request approval. And we've been trying to do that, but some of them with scheduling of physicals and some of that stuff is just taking time, and we're finding that. If we delay and push down another month to wait, we're losing them to other, other people. So that's why you've seen a little bit of a shift.
I think I can take a little pressure off. I think the background check part was the sticking point, wasn't it?
For the.
It was, but. We sort of, and so I just, from a first principles perspective, I'd like to do what works, and I don't want to.
Sure.
Be overly cumbersome to you guys a- as far as what you need to do to get things done, but. We did have an incident, I think, with a background check.
Yes, and we've found sometimes background checks are coming back in within a week, and sometimes it's taken three or four weeks, and so we're, we're trying to. Trying to speed up that process a little bit, if that makes sense, so we don't lose candidates to other departments.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent.
Unfortunately.
And feel free to work with us on it, you know, anything that isn't working for you or whatever. I mean, we're somewhat flexible. Because we, we had a candidate in nineteen eighty that had a background check that didn't work out, came for the board. Does it mean that we're not open to suggestions and ideas, particularly personally?
Thank you.
It's all hell. I agree. I mean, if there are parts of that process that you think could be, you know, modified. You know, by all means, we could discuss them, and if there's a need to have any kind of a special session. Between, you know, the routinely scheduled monthly meetings in order to affect a more rapid hiring process of qualified people. Then, you know, we, we should do that because we, I, we all understand that it's tight. You know, and we don't, we don't want to lose qualified personnel, you know, to other area departments when, you know, the, uh, they started out with us and, you know, perhaps if we were part of the problem or creating obstacles. We'd like to know what those are. I agree with Mr. Kelly, if the, the background check's fairly, uh, fundamental. You know, to weeding out people, you know, but, but then again, there are several things that could be up for discussion, but I think that would be one piece that, I don't know how we can move that up or move it, make it go faster, but that would be one thing I would like to see. Early on in that process.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Um. Okay, I, well, briefly, uh, just, I'm curious, I always ask about, ask about this every year. We're flu shots for this year, flu shot, flu season's right around the corner. Are we doing something like that for our staff this year? Or anything like? Okay. So we start vaccinating in September, so typically, uh, for those who care to receive it. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Coler.
Well, we're. Pond run's going really well. Um, the rain has kind of hindered us a little bit, slowed us down. Um, us, we've got all the pipe in, got all the dirt hole in, got everything secured. Um, we still have to do some, some blocktop work. Uh, in which we may. I'm probably tomorrow, I'm going to have to request another week of closure for. Pond run roads that we can get that completed, but everything else is in great shape. It's just. We should be able to get it seeded and strolled by the end of this week, as long as it doesn't get too muddy down there. Um, but yeah, it's, it's gone really well. Um, there was, actually, we found a spring on the uphill side. And I think that is what the biggest issue of what was causing what we had. Um, so we. Installed a French drain in the bottom of the ditch. All the way down to the cross culver. We kind of added that on after we found that issue. Um, so that we can streamline the water to get it over to. The big creek side, so, um, that should help stabilize that area and not be so. You know, not be a constant nuisance, so. Hopefully.
Yeah. Okey-dokey, and we're going to be satisfying the note, uh, recommendations or requests for re- uh, reforesting part of that area, right?
Yeah, yeah, and we agree upon the plant five new trees.
Yep.
Um, but I would. We're going to wait until fall to plant those because. Which is not going to affect the road in any way, just because we want to make sure we don't hit a dry spell to where those trees don't make it, so.
Yep.
We'll have some time to get. You know, in the ground.
That's a great point. You know, we won't have time to go out and water me, that we don't have the resources for that, but yeah, great idea. Um, okay. All right, very good. Anything else, John?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, parks and green space. Just addressing.
Just a reminder, uh. Concert in the park, August twenty-sixth from three to six P M, uh, planning's well underway and, uh, appreciate the time of, uh. Chief Roxman, Chief Wright, and John, uh, making before this meeting to kind of wrap up plans, uh, for needs for that event, so, uh, thanks for coming together on that. Should be a good event. Um. The movie night is still on for September sixteenth, eight P M, uh, specific with me, so those are the next, uh, two events planned. Um. So that's all we have for this month.
Which one is the Dan Varner? Is that the concert?
Yes.
That's Dan Varner.
Provide.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah, they're supposed to have a really good following and, uh, uh, should have a good turnout for the car show as well. Um, so four or five trucks, uh, so it should be a good time.
Yeah. Next time the Eagles, right?
Did you get my email?
I did it.
Okay.
Yes, appreciate you, uh, following up on that, I guess.
I haven't heard back, but.
He said it may take a couple of days, but, um, he kind of alluded to the fact that there would be a link to send payment for that, but apparently.
I didn't see, I didn't see it, but I submitted everything and I put down you as the contact.
Yeah, and he's, it, it's on the application as well, so, um, if I don't. See something in the next, uh, maybe Friday, I may try and call up there again.
Okay, just I seen where he had put comments in of what you had said in regards to it.
Right.
But I did give Pat Hogan the check and everything and.
Yeah, he, he mailed everything, so, um. Anyway, yeah, we'll just continue to follow up, but.
Okay.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you. Okey-dokey, um, Mr. McCarthy, Community Development.
So, um, last month, we applied for a, a grant to the Congress for New Urbanism for a, effectively a design. Partnership between Batavia Township and Pierce Township to evaluate the Amelia neighborhood. As you know. It's bifurcated by this, by State Route one twenty-five, and so it's really difficult to get on the same page about. Things such as, uh, design landscaping and so forth and overall use planning and so forth. And we heard back that we were shortlisted, so they like our project. They're gonna, they're asking for a little more information regarding, uh, more specifics, so. Uh, it's pretty exciting to make it to the, to the, basically step two with them as well. So they'll only pick four projects throughout the entire greater Cincinnati area. For their main conference that'll be held here next year. Uh, the Beck George site was selected for a step-two evaluation through the Wave Five Program with Jobs Ohio. So that's another pretty exciting project. Uh, no, there is no, um. Obligation through the township except for basically in-kind staff contributions, which is about a thirty thousand dollar valuation. There is a, a consultant based out of South Carolina that's enlisted by Jobs Ohio that will be evaluating the site. And really good for marketing and act, uh, getting more access to funding, loans, grants, and so forth for site readiness. Yeah. We are also, uh, staff is working with McBride Dale Clearing. We have a meeting next week, uh, regarding a, uh, policy document that we will be working to craft with them regarding, uh, one hundred pond view. Uh, illustrated in our land use plan as well as an implementation step, so as we get those materials, we'll get those, uh, passed along to you guys as well and get, uh, community input and so forth. Uh, illustrated in our land use plan as well as an implementation step. So as we get those materials, we'll get those, uh, passed along to you guys as well and get, uh, community input and so forth as well. And last item I have is, uh, Administrator Williams and I are working on a potential OPWC project. We've reached out to ODOT, the county engineer's office and is of course our department as well to evaluate the Lewis White Oak one twenty-five intersection for, as a potential opportunity. The grant is an eighty percent grant. So it looks like it's a potential, um, opportunity for design funding to engineer that, that project, which was illustrated in some transportation, uh, planning that, that we had done a number of years ago. So we'll, we'll keep you up to date on that, but we should, we'll be meeting, meeting in the next couple of weeks on that. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Going back, Eddie, real quick, going back to the Beck George grant, um, is Mr. I Colts being looped in on all of this?
He has. We, we spoke to him on the, during the onset before we contacted utility providers and so forth to kind of get the team together. He said, that sounds great. And once we heard that we had made it to step two, we reached out. I sent, I sent him, um, information. I believe Scott Gafford has also been in contact with him as well regarding the project.
Okay.
Um, refresh my memory, Mr. McCarthy. Did we apply, did we put in, in for anything for the C D B G this year?
We did. And so we, uh, well, that we are, um, working on implementing, implementing our twenty twenty-two project, which is, which is a, is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar uh, improvement project in Hamlet. We recently submitted the sub-recipient agreement to Claremont County Economic Development. That's kind of the first step in ensuring that we're ready to, to take funds. Uh, presently, we need to work on our, um, our RFQ with our engineering firm that we, that we are going to choose to kind of proceed with the design and then construction.
That was a sidewalk.
The sidewalk. Yep.
Situation. Okay. Thanks for the reminder.
Sure.
Okay. Um, Mr. Williams, administration.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before we leave, uh, Eddie's report, I did want to make a, a comment about the C N U grant. Um, and the fact that we're shortlisted is a really big deal. And I think that's kudos to, uh, him and to Taylor and Batavia to be able to put together an application that was so compelling that we were shortlisted. Um, this is, uh, if we were to get it, would be a real, uh, a national opportunity for us, um, to be recognized. Um, so, um, we'll cross our fingers and hopefully we would get there, but it's, it's, it's a major deal. Um, if you're a community that's chosen, um, there's only been, you know, a handful over the years at this Congress and new urbanism that have chosen these projects. And a lot of them have been very significant projects, you know, for the communities down the road. So, uh, just kudos to, uh, Mr. McCarthy, because he's done a great job on that. Um, a couple of things that I have, uh, very quickly, uh, one, um, I'm working on, um, is, uh, I think the board is aware, looking at our tax levies, um, and an analysis. Uh, the board was kind enough to allow me to contract with, uh, um, uh, someone to help to build some of the spreadsheets and things because I didn't have time to do that. But, uh, those are complete. Um, so the next step would be to put that, uh, that data together into a full analysis and presentation. Uh, trustee Freeman is, uh, having a, uh, meeting, uh, with the, uh, budget committee, which consists of the department heads himself and a fiscal officer um, later this month. So hopefully I'll have that information as I told him, um, completed and we can go through that to also make sure that, uh, the other two trustees get that information as well. Um, as, as we work through it. Um, also, uh, wanted to update you on the status of the INRAC grant. Um, as you know, we, uh, were awarded a grant to purchase a property on Jenny Lynn from St. Bernadette. Um, that's been a very slow process as, uh, Mr. Freeman can attest because he's worked very, uh, worked very hard on that, um, over the last year. But, uh, the good news is that, uh, the St. Bernadette is now in the process of doing the survey and a lot split for that. Um, once that's completed, then we can start, um, the final, um, the process of purchasing land, um, with this INRAC money and with our local match. Uh, and then finally, uh, Grow Park, good news, uh, that work will begin, uh, next Monday. Uh, Bruce Construction, who you all approved, uh, contract for already has a couple of pieces of equipment out there ready to go. Um, so really excited about that. And they feel like that they can get in and out pretty quickly, uh, with the caveat that if they have a supply problem. But when John and I met with them, um, was it last week, I guess, they seen that we met with one of the subcontractors doing the lighting work and the camera work. And I was concerned about getting some of the materials and he seemed to think that he's pretty on a pretty quick turnaround on that. So, um, go ahead, John.
They're, they're actually going to be doing the playground back over there tomorrow. So they asked, we hope.
So definitely good news there and hopefully we can have that park, uh, ready to go for, um, our community by the mid-September at the latest. That's all I have.
Thank you. There's a lot of good news in that report. That's fantastic. Thank you. All right. Uh, any old business to come forth board? Okay. Then we shall move on to new business. Uh, Mrs. Shy.
Um, I request the motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of July in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand four seventy-four ninety-eight.
So moved. Seconded.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of July in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand six fifty-one ninety-seven.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
That is all I got.
Wow. A record style. Wow. This could be a record meeting. We are moving right along, I must say. Um, Administrator Williams?
Um, yes, sir. Uh, so I, uh, the administrator Williams, uh, request a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two-three approving a change into the Declaration of Covenants Conditions and Restrictions and Reservations of Easements recorded on March twelfth, nineteen ninety-eight between Traditions Investments slash or dash and Pierce Incorporated and Pierce Township excluding from the approved uniform construction and design standards, lot five fifteen, also known as parcel G. The legendary run, um, homeowners association board successors to the declaration and subsequent consent decree has proposed this amendment to the construction design standards. The petitioner, that is the new property owner, has agreed to pay the township legal fees associated with the review and filing of the revisions of the consent decree. Um, uh, so just for those that are here watching tonight, um, a couple of months ago, uh, the legendary run board, um, came and, um, petitioned the, uh, board, uh, the, the board trustees at that time um, to consider a change to, uh, what was a master development agreement essentially, um, with, uh, great traditions, uh, back in the mid nineties. And, uh, that was to exclude one parcel from, uh, many parcels that were part of the legendary run development. Um, it's a, uh, I think approximately five acre, uh, parcel that sits on White Oak Road. Um, it's detached from the rest of legendary run. Um, and it's, it's not sold for a minute, many years, but, uh, we, uh, someone did come along interested in the property and, uh, would like to build a house, but the house varies in some degree to what the, the, uh, existing design standards are for legendary run. Um, in this case, the, the home, um, has, uh, metal siding as opposed to, uh, the brick or, or other types of masonry or wood. Um, and, and a, uh, a metal roof as well. The architecture of the, uh, home would be a very nice home. The architecture would be very Midwest style that would fit in with, uh, the other homes that are along that road. Uh, the legendary run board looked at that. They felt like that it was a reasonable, uh, change to, um, the, uh, design standards in that particular case. So what the board would be approving tonight is a resolution to make those amendments, um, to, uh, those, uh, design standards within the covenants um, that we adopted back in nineteen, um, ninety-eight, um, so that, uh, they could proceed forward. Uh, again, any costs that would be associated with, uh, developing, um, this, uh, the, 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 the changes that are here um, are covered by the homeowner, not the township, um, including the filing of that with the court. Um, and I don't know if Ms. Barbier wants to add anything to that.
The only thing that I would add is that we're, we're not changing the design standards that are governing legendary run, um, covenants and property. It's just we're removing this parcel from those standards. So it's just a simple application. I'll be reported with the, uh, reporter's office. Believe the covenants, the, the actual documents are prepared in the package.
And we've, we've looked thoroughly at this or I, I feel, uh, with the legendary run board. And it just seems like sort of an anomaly that's, doesn't really fit the typical standards as what you would see. It's out on White Oak more or less. So the, the address is almost a white oak address. Uh, anybody's familiar with legendary, it's sort of back, um, off McKenzie Crossing. If you, if you go back in there and the, the house sits, uh, as, as a white oak address, almost on the back end of driving or the, the, uh, range for, per legendary run. So I feel like it is sort of a parcel that was, uh, platted in legendary, but doesn't really fit as far as that goes. So I, I personally feel good about it. And it doesn't sound like this is going to change any kind of, you know, set of precedent or anything. You don't feel legally for any other parcels within legendary as far as what we're giving this.
No, I mean, in there, actually there's language in the document that says it's not precedent setting. So they, they've worked to, you know, put that language in there. HOA attorney has tried to head that off. So I don't think it would be precedent setting due to the unique nature of the property.
And no expenses at that.
No expense to the taxpayers of Pierce Township other than the property owner, right?
This, this is part of this.
For this part.
The, the, the initial review process, uh, obviously that's something that cost us a little bit of money, but, um, we wanted to make sure we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. Um, as, as trustee Kelly said, that we weren't creating some sort of press precedent for the rest of the development. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Um, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Williams?
Uh, yes. Administrator Williams requests a motion to renew the time block with computer systems management and that C S M for three thousand dollars. That's approximately thirty hours of support. Um, and we, we pay that in blocks to, uh, C S M as we need it for computer support. So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Uh, uh, come on up here if you're gonna, yeah, it's just better for the people on the listening up there and everybody can hear you. Okay.
Maybe I should spoke up.
Tell, tell us who you are. Yeah, you're good.
Yeah. So just to understand, I think we're all good. I think that's a thumbs up. Uh, so I guess Dan Schuster, future resident of Pierce Township. Um, I'm super excited. My wife and I, we've been working really hard to, to get this, uh, put together. We actually own the property now. So it is ours. Um, I got some plans here. Honestly, I need to show you, but we, we've made the adjustments per the HOA, um, design review committee. And we're just super excited to be part of the community. Um, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. And I just want to say thank you for all your time. Now, folks, I know it's been a lot of phone calls and emails and, um, we're just super excited. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're glad to have you.
Welcome to Pierce Township.
Thank you so much.
You can join one of our committees, uh, when you're officially residents here. We could use. Oh.
He's already, we're already recruiting you for free labor.
Hey, listen, you're, you're young and so this is your township. We're getting older and you guys are the ones that are going to be the future of the townships. Fantastic. We're glad to have you. Thank you very much for coming to speak to us. Okay. Um, was that it, Mr. Williams? Or you didn't have, okay. Mr. Uh, Chief Brockerman, sorry.
I request a motion to sell firearms and ammunition to Vance's law enforcement for seven thousand two hundred twenty dollars and eighty cents. The inventory of items that the police department proposes to sell to Vance's includes various weapons and ammunition from its property room. This includes twelve police shotguns recently removed from the police vehicles. Firearms from a twenty twenty-two court-approved forfeiture hearing, donated firearms and ammunition.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Um, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes. Colonel Brockerman.
I request a motion to purchase three less lethal forty millimeter sponge launcher, launchers, twenty-five sponge rounds and one training kit from Vance's law enforcement for four thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. If approved, this purchase will be funded through the sale of the aforementioned firearm and ammunition sale to Vance's.
What are sponge launchers?
Uh, it, it fires, it's a, uh, tool that, uh, has a, a, um, range of a hundred and twenty feet. And it fires a highly dense foam round from, uh, the, the weapon. And it's, it's the equivalent of getting hit by a sixty-five mile an hour, uh, fastball. So it's a way for us to get the attention of someone who's not responding, who's, uh, resisting arrest and, uh, not complying with, uh, uh, commands. We used them in Cincinnati.
I see.
And they were quite effective.
I got you. Just curious. I feared a sixty-five mile an hour fastball and I was in knot hole. I mean, that was fast. You were standing there on the edge of the plate.
I suspect that will get somebody's attention.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Colonel Brockerman?
I request a motion to pay an invoice from the Ohio State Highway Patrol for three thousand dollars. The invoice covers the cost of Leeds access for the police department's twelve term terminals, which are the ten police vehicle, mobile data computers and two station computers. The invoice covers the period July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes, chief.
I request a motion to sell police vehicle number four, a twenty fifteen Ford Explorer on gov deals. The vehicle, which has a hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and twelve miles, has been out of service, uh, service since late last year with significant engine issues. The cost of repair exceeds a vehicle's market value.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes, chief.
And finally, I request a motion to pay an invoice from Juggler Dave and Friends LLC, doing business as Cincinnati Circus Company in the amount of three thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars. The invoice covers carnival games, a tent and other items rented for our, uh, Pierce Township National Night Out on August second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, private donations to the police department earmarked for this event will cover the entire cost of National Night Out.
It's kind of funny. You go from selling firearms to paying juggler Dave. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Thank you, Colonel Brockerman. Chief Wright?
I request a motion to approve the appointments of Joe Crago, Donald Davis and Madeline Enderly Montoya. It's part-time firefighter E M Ts at the established rate pending successful completion of Ohio B C I criminal background check and pre-employment physicals. I would like to note the, the background check and physicals are done. We just don't have the results back yet.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Fair enough. I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Mr. Coler.
Number eleven. I'm not so sure if it has to be a motion or not. You kind of already approved it when we did the, uh, the paving. Um, but it's to make note for you guys that we're paying that bill. Um, and I'll read it as it is in case it has to be a motion. Request a motion to make, I request a motion to make the final payment in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars to Claremont County Engineers for the twenty twenty-three road resurfacing program.
Your dissertation about the motion was longer than the motion. I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes, Mr. Coler.
I request a motion to accept the lowest and best bid from Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter season to purchase up to one thousand tons of road salt for a cost of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars at a rate of ninety-nine point forty-seven dollars per ton dump delivery as ordered by Pierce Township.
John, is that comparable? How, what's, how does that look in comparison to, you know, last year, maybe the prior year?
It's, I mean, it's.
Roughly, I'm curious.
I don't really, I mean, it's pretty close. It's not much difference.
To chop it around?
But it's, we do it through Swap for G, which is a consortium. Um, and they have multiple bidders. And they have multiple bidders bid on it.
Gotcha. I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Coler. Mr. McCarthy?
Community Development and Plan Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to consider Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh two four pertaining to text amendment case ZC twenty twenty-three oh oh four.
Well, so moved.
Eddie, can you give a little background on the moratorium?
Sure.
So we're not up to the moratorium. I'm sorry?
We're doing the text amendment case.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, like. Well, either way, yeah. Yeah, like, I sort of, I made a glance down a little.
Yeah, so there was a, in December of twenty twenty-two, this board passed a moratorium just so that staff could work on evaluating automotive uses, storage, and others, other text amendments, including landscaping based off of the Land Use Plan Public Input Survey. So that was an eight-month moratorium, and in that time, we had an evaluation, two public hearings, and this body recommends theoretically, theoretically requested staff craft a motion to approve the proposed tax amendments at, at your last public hearing. So what you have in front of you right now is that drafted resolution, and then a small extension is the next motion in order to get that moratorium, ten additional days to cover the appeal period for the, for the text amendments. So when text amendments are approved, there's a thirty-day waiting period. So we have to make sure we cover it.
I'll make the motion.
We had a motion on the, on the text amendment change. We need a second.
I'll second the motion.
And, and for the viewing public, and for those of you in attendance, the, the last hearing was last week on this, so this was thoroughly and appropriately vetted, giving the public ample opportunity to comment. There's a motion and a second roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Mr. McCarthy?
Community Development and Plan Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to extend moratorium resolution number twenty twenty-two oh five nine for a period of ten days through, and it should read September, that was my mistake, September eighth, covering three point oh six C effective date and referendum. And basically what that is, is that the moratorium ends August twenty-eighth, but we need ten additional days to cover the, the thirty-day appeal for the text amendment.
I'll make a motion with the adjustment of the date.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Mr. McCarthy?
Community Development and Plan Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to consider Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh two five to enforce a zoning resolution regarding an abandoned sign at fourteen oh one State Route one twenty-five, Pierce Township, Ohio. This particular site has been inactive for a, a number of months at a minimum and has not had a cash loans operation on site for at least the entirety of my tenure here, which has been four years. And so our regulation basically requires that property owners dismantle, abandon signage for our zoning resolution in the event that that use has been discontinued for a period of time. We have reached out multiple times to the property owner. So this, this property is the, is the defunct gas. It was a formerly built as a gas station car wash right in front of Kroger. And we have received no response from the owner. The only response that we have received, though, is regarding a, an excessive weeds and vegetation violation that we sent. They have actually cut the, cut the weeds. So your next, the next motion is actually not, does not need to be addressed. They have cut the grass, but they have not taken down the sign or addressed the sign. So staff recommends approval of this resolution in order for us to advance the enforcement process and, and get the sign taken down.
Just so I understand that when we move, if we move forward with this, we're going, is our staff going to take that down? Are we going to hire somebody to take that down? And, you know, however way it goes, are we going to levy our costs against the, the property, the property owner? How does that work?
Basically, so the strategy would be, we will have to go out and actually mail another set of certified letters and notices to the property owner. And if that does not work, we will work with legal counsel in order to bring a suit against the property owner and obtain permission from the court in order to have a contractor go on site and take this, take the facility down. Part of that request and part of what's included in the motion is our position on fines. So it's for every day of a violation, we can find up to five hundred dollars for each day that it's in violation. We would need permission from the judge, is my understanding, in order to recoup that potential cost. However, any cost that we actually incur, we would place as a lien on the property at an absolute bare minimum.
And, and perhaps in addition to any fines that were awarded by the judge?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be sure, I, I looked it up and you may have already mentioned this, but this is the cash loans signs?
That is correct.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, and we're skipping number sixteen, correct?
Yep, that's unresolved. And the last item that I have is Community Development and Plan Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to consider Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh two seven to enforce ORC five oh five eight seven regarding excessive vegetation at sixteen ninety-one Stella Drive, Pierce Township, Ohio. This is, in your packets, you'll see that it's overgrown, overgrown grass and weeds on the property. Zoning Inspector Andrew Higgins has reached out to the property owner twice. We have sent two warning letters. We have not received a response on this. So what we would do is we would send certified mailings to the property owner, giving them another opportunity to respond. And we would work with the contractor to have the grass cut and placed as a lien on the property.
Who, who was it that inspected it?
Mr. Higgins.
Oh, you're Higgins. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't know, didn't know your name, really.
Our new zoning slash IT guy. That's Eddie's gotten some help.
Where's the, is this, is this the parcel photograph from Love? Wait a minute.
A photographer he ate.
Ah, okay. So the Loveless Circle, that, that's not what?
The GPS sign is based on where the bus.
Oh, okay. So that's the premises in question. The photograph is on of the premises at Stella Drive. Okay.
But I do, I do love the cash loans picture. This one's nice. This is suitable for, for framing. I like that.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Higgins, okay. So we do not have an executive session scheduled for this evening. Is there any other business to come before the board? I'll request a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, not her.
Michelle Ball, say thirteen ballpoint court. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. It's now August and Christmas will be here soon. So, and your Christmas, I know, the annual Christmas parade is scheduled for the second Sunday of December. As of right now, we will be going the same route that we always pass. That'll be December the tenth. Pick up at two o'clock, go down to the Amelia Pierce Township Krogers. And I'll, I'll get more information out to everybody with like flyers and stuff like that. And I'll reach out to Tavia Township and Claremont County Sheriff's Department. I'm at their next meeting. So, but we'll you'll be seeing things in your new friends from me. So don't get me out of your spam folder.
Thanks, Michelle.
Michelle, I asked this last year, and I don't, I'm, I'm not speaking on behalf of my colleagues here, but, you know, I thought last year, that I may have mentioned this to you or somebody else, what a nice show of unity might be if, if all the trustees from both sides and fiscal officers, obviously, participated in the parade as entrance, if you will. What do you, what do you think about that? What do you guys think about that?
There's only one way that I will agree to that, and that's if Saul's dresses like an elf. Does he even get that to happen?
I can't promise that for Mr. Saul's, but I will extend the invitation of him to be in the parade again right here. But you all are obviously welcome to, to be in the parade and represent the township that you currently do so well.
Well, that's very nice. Comfortable and chief rights cruiser through the parade. Very low key.
Problem was, they put me in the back of the cruiser, and he used, he tested one of those beanbag guns.
Well, I'm shaped like a Santa Claus, so I could dress up as a Santa Claus, I suppose. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other business to come forth, board? No, okay. Seeing none, I request a motion for German.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Thank you. Have a good.